I'd like to call with order to the meeting of April fifteenth, 2014. Would you all please stand for the indication of flag allegiance?
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community, help us to do right, to do fairly with all of our citizens, and to put our faith and courage in you. In your name we pray.
For the allegiance to the flag from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Sauer?
Yeah.
McFane?
Here.
Challenger?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Blakeman?
Here.
Lillard?
Here.
Baisseau?
Here.
Approval of the meeting minutes from April first. Was there any questions there or admission? If not, they will stand as presented. I have a couple of communications to read this evening, and first being a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month. States, a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month, whereas safety is the highest priority from the highways and streets of our villages, cities, and states, and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across the state and millions across the nation, and whereas in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness, and whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway safety officials in our state should join with the bait of Ohio Incorporated Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorists awareness, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in a safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. And now therefore, I, Brian Blakeman, Mayor of the City of Columbiana, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2014, as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Second one is a letter I received from Jerry Monge regarding National Day of Prayer Task Force. Dear Mayor, Council President, Village Manager, and your employees, we recognize the incredible stress and pressure you are under in the office that you hold, providing leadership can be a lonely and thankless task, but be encouraged. The National Day of Prayer is a special interactive prayer service for significant government, military, media, business, education, church, and family representatives. It is the first Thursday in May every year. This year it is May first, hosted by the four Cs of New Waterford, Ohio Crestview Community Churches Concerns. On behalf of our communities, we want you to know that we will be praying for you on May first, 2014, the National Day of Prayer. We are not doing this to promote any political agenda. Our purpose is to encourage you as a leader through prayer and to demonstrate God's love. We will be asking God to grant you wisdom and courage in making important decisions. We also will be praying God's blessings on your family and for your safety and protection. We are inviting you and all of the workforce and volunteers to attend this community service. We would be honored to pray for you, and the service will be at the Crestview High School Auditorium, Notre Performing Arts Center at seven o'clock PM Thursday, May first, 2014. Thank you for your public service to our community and our country sincerely, Jerry D. Monge. There's nothing under reports of commissions and boards. Under, I recognize the persons desiring to appear, there's three. The first being April Brinker from the Chamber of Commerce regarding the thank you sign for flower basket donors coming up.
Hello, thank you. I'm April Brinker with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to ask your approval to place a thank you sign somewhere on the square for the sponsors and donors we've received for the flower basket fund. We greatly appreciate their donations and helping with this and would like to recognize them. In addition, we would ask that you consider allowing us to extend the thirty day limitation, perhaps for the season of the flower baskets. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
How big a sign?
Four by eight would be the largest.
So probably on one of the corners, is it both in the center?
Right, we were thinking maybe where the United Way fundraising sign goes, maybe in that corner. Thank you.
Any motion?
I'll move if we approve that.
I'll second that. Maybe they could work with, well, bouting on the placement or something.
Yes, Bob had provided us a copy and we had spoke with him, so thank you.
Any questions? Deanne?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McFane?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that, by the way.
Thank you.
Next is Pat Tingle from RR&amp;B to discuss ideas for restoration project and the pocket park design.
May I just say?
Sure.
Good evening, Council. I'm from the Restoration, Renovation, and Beautification Committee, and we have two projects that need your approval before we proceed with them. First of all, I'd like to mention the members are the directors of the Restoration Committee. They are Terry Fulton, myself, I'm Pat Tingle, Von Musser, Don Rance, Richard Hura, Pat Kaler, Don Becker, Helen Gormley, Tucker Coke Jr., Dick Simpson, and Dr. Pritchard, who can't come to our meetings much anymore, but we maintain him emeritus because he's been such a great contributor, and he did vote on our last project, so. Just a very brief history of the RR&amp;B, because I can't remember those of you that were here when we originally started. In 2007, probably 2006, we organized. Our Phase One was to do the four quarters of the square. We did that at a cost of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Phase Two was to do the clock in the center of the square. We completed that in 2008 at a cost of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Phase Three was our Route fourteen project. This is where 164, 46, and 140 come together, and we did a sign that says, "Welcome to Columbiana." There's a bridge there, and both corners are landscaped. We did that at a cost of fifty-eight thousand dollars. The last thing we've done is after the new lamp post in Main Street was finished, we did the landscaping of the little bump out beds that are there, and that was a small project. That was just like six thousand dollars. I should mention, in doing all of these, I think our committee, though its life hasn't been very long, we've changed the face of Columbiana. You see the clock everywhere, okay? We see it in all kinds of advertisements and all the newspapers. We're very proud of what we did, and most of all, we're proud of the fact that we did it with private donations, okay? All that money was raised by selling memorial pavers, memorial sitting blocks, just generous donations from individuals within the community, memorial benches. There was a total raised of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars and a hundred-and-eighty-three, and of that, thirty thousand dollars came from grants, and I should say with great pride, that this thirty thousand dollars of grants came from the Columbiana Community Foundation. So, I think we need to be very grateful that we have a foundation that's that generous. Okay, going back to our original purpose, people have asked why we have such a cumbersome name, okay? We are kind of a mouthful. It started out renovation, restoration, and beautification. Well, actually, we've done our renovation phase. The square was a renovation, from what it was. We've done beautification by doing the Route fourteen and Main Street, and we're now to restoration, okay? And that's the third component of our committee. So tonight, I'd like to present to you our ideas for Firestone, eightieth anniversary of Firestone. We're calling it the Eightieth Anniversary Firestone Restoration Project, and it includes not just the park, but also the cemetery. Anything that's firestone. It was, I'm getting a date here. When we first started talking about this, I looked up the history of Columbiana. I'm originally from Columbiana, and opening day for the park, for Firestone Park, was July twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-five. Harvey Firestone was here and took very great pride in the fact that he was a native of Columbiana, and he was giving us a park and a cemetery. He contributed all the acreage, and in fact, he was very instrumental in coming and watching the construction of the park. He chose a very high-profile architect. He took a great personal interest in it. He died on February seventh, nineteen thirty-eight, but he was here for the opening of the park. So, knowing that our eightieth anniversary is coming up, and we already had been approached by a number of people in the community to be of help to the park, we made a presentation to the park board, and of course, they were most glad, most grateful to have any kind of help we could give them. So we're calling our project the Eightieth Anniversary Firestone Restoration Project. Basically, what we want to do is organize a task force with members of all major community groups to work together and come up with a major plan where we do an assessment of the park, not just, we're well aware that Mirror Lake needs a lot of attention, but it's been many years since anyone looked back at that original architect's drawing to see what the park looked like in nineteen thirty-five. So we'd like to do an assessment of not just the lake, the pavilions, all the plantings, and see what we could do to kind of upgrade the park and bring it back to what it once was. And this is in no way disrespectful of what the park board people have done over the years. Columbiana has been very, very wonderful stewards of the park. Many things have been done over the years. But as the years go on, the plantings get older, the bond issues are harder and harder to pass, and in the current economic and political climate, maybe it's time for the private sector to stand up and do some fundraising. Not that we wouldn't welcome more money, operating money, but it seems like a good idea to us. So, what we're proposing is a number of fundraising events, getting some experts in, perhaps a landscape architect, a professional grant writer, a professional publicist, and put together a program so that on the eightieth anniversary, we can actually have a party and celebrate some of what we're able to do. We see it as a long-range project. It's going to take a while to pull it together, but in the short time we've been talking about it, we feel like we're getting a very positive response from people in the community. We'd like to put up a booth or a little tent at street fair and take the original drawings of the park and put them up and show people of Columbiana what their heritage is. We should be very proud that we had one of the captains of industry that grew up in Columbiana and thought enough about this to come back and do what he did. And I have to tell a personal story here because I'm just about old enough to do it. My grandmother went to school with Harvey Firestone, and one of the many conversations I had with her about the history of the town and so forth, she said she didn't really think Harvey was all that smart. And I said to her, "Well, Grandma, I think you may have missed it on that one. It's either that you didn't quite see it, or nobody should be judged by what they do in high school," okay? And I think that's probably true. He was certainly very exceptional and thought a lot of our community. So basically, we need your approval for our task force and to do a good deal of fundraising, and we would come back to you from time to time and tell you where we are, but we'd like to have a lovely big celebration on the eightieth anniversary. Maybe go to our schools and educate our young people on who Firestone was. I'm always amazed at how many people don't know who Harvey Firestone was, so. That's one project. I have another one, but maybe we need to act on that one first. Any questions on the Firestone?
Can we have a motion to proceed with the plan just to?
I'll make a motion that we approved the development of the plan. If you understand the details will be presented to the park board or council at appropriate times.
Very good. Second. Any questions? Deanne?
Sauer?
Yes.
McFane?
Yes.
Schaller?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the second one is, that's our big one. Okay, our second project is a kind of a final beautification project. The lot between Vivian's Antiques and Ryan's News is the site of where a building burned out. It's an empty lot. It's owned by the city, okay? We'd like to put a pocket park in there. Pocket parks are kind of popular in cities and towns across the country, and being nothing has happened there for a long time, we thought we'd come up with an idea. We have looked for some ideas on the internet and picked some features that we'd like, but it basically would be just what the name implies. It would be just a nice area with trees, flowers, and grasses, benches, tables, where people who are shopping in town could sit down, and I have kind of just a rough idea. This is not what it's going to be, but this is the idea, okay? We'd like to put it out for bids and get some idea of what local landscapers could do. Fundraising, we have an idea for a sponsor, someone to pay for the whole thing, and then we have a backup idea, okay? And then we have another backup idea after that, so, and maybe we'll be reduced to fundraising. But basically, our purpose is to make Main Street a little more beautiful and to kind of go with what we've done in the square. We would pick up on some of the elements of what we've done in the square, so. That's our second project. We were anticipating twenty to thirty thousand dollars we put out to bid, so we need approval to do that. The city does own the lot.
That sounds great, Pat.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we support.
Pocket park.
The pocket park. It'd be, I don't know whether they can put it out for bids, because I don't know how it's going to work, but I support your concept anyhow. Make a motion to support your concept.
Our other projects we've put out for bids, and I have talked to Lance quite a bit, so we would work with the city on this. We would have to, because that's a very rough surface in there, and it's going to take some ingenuity, I think, to pull off the whole thing, so.
I would second that.
Don't matter.
Second.
I think it's a great idea. There's lots of cities, lots of towns that have done things like that, have included, you know, little pieces of artwork, some more historic pieces of town, a whole variety of things could be included there. I like the idea of having, you know, fairly good, solid tables that people can't move, that maybe have a chessboard on top so people can sit down and play chess or checkers or something like that. There's just a lot you could do with that lot, and anything would be, I think, would look better than this town.
We could actually pick up on what we've done on Main Street with those benches, you know, and the two pillars that are at the front of the lot are the same pillars that are up on the square too, so there would be some continuity in the whole project.
I got some email the other day, and Sarasota, they have a pocket park. I can't remember what street it's on. They actually have little pianos that they're sitting on for people that just can come and play music on the street. Very neat.
One more idea that I presented to Lance when we originally did this. One of the unsightly things on Main Street, unfortunately, very necessary, are the transformer boxes. We came up with an idea that we found on the internet from Culver City, California, where they took the boxes and made an acrylic sleeve for them that actually fits over the box. They took a picture of what's behind the box and then photographed and put it on the sleeve, so that when you look at the sleeve, you look right into what you see behind it. And I shared that with Lance. I don't know if you want to say anything about it or not.
Yeah, we're pretty sure it's okay with the electric guidelines, but that's, got to check with a couple more things to make sure it's clean.
Yeah, we just don't want to interfere with the boxes in any way, but they aren't very attractive.
We've seen different things too. Dick wrote some, where he had their paintings in.
Yeah, we have a copy of his paintings, but these actually have a very natural look to them. In fact, they're called invisible boxes.
Neat. Well, I appreciate everything that you're, I mean, that's a daunting just to sit there and come up with these ideas, let alone see the group, and you've done a lot, the whole group has.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Well, Pat, too, you have a coffee shop right across the street, so that gives an opportunity for people to just sit down, share ideas, you know, and have a great time in our town. So I commend you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Can we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Should we have one more person desiring to appear that's on the agenda? We're going to hear that, and then we're going to move to executive session shortly. Kelly Harding, representing Heroes and Halos regarding Safety Day on June twenty-eighth in Firestone Park and the five K race and fun run on July twentieth, 2014.
We are looking to have our third annual Special Needs Safety Day in interactive health care. It will be on June twenty-eighth this year. Ian will be having it, the same as last year, it'll be at Columbiana High School. What we're requesting is the use of the persons with public safety workers, fire PD and EMS, like we have the last few years. For the last two years, we've reached about thirteen-hundred people within the events, and the one thing we have taken from this event is we now do trainings for public safety workers because it has raised pretty much a lot of awareness as to the differences in how we have to treat persons with special needs in an emergency situation, and that wouldn't have come about if it wasn't for the Safety Day, so that's something that we're really proud of. We have trained two fire departments recently in the past few months, and we have a team that together, and from the Safety Day, we've also put together a student ambassador program where we're going into schools and raising awareness on persons with special needs, and it has all stemmed from this. So, we are just asking permission to again, use the public safety workers. Pretty much, a lot of them have, they come up and ask when we're doing it again because they really enjoy it.
And then the Route race also separately? You have listed?
Yes. Then the race is, the date is actually September twenty, September.
It's on during July twenty?
December twentieth, yes. And it's at the high school track, and if we could have EMS and the police department there as well. I did talk with Officer Fox, and he said had had auxiliary there last year and said that he didn't see any problem with it again this year. Now, the thing that we would like to request that would be a little different than last year is we used paper signs last year, and it rained slightly torrential rains that morning, and our arrows were blurred, and if it weren't for the auxiliary, it would have been, it could have been not so bad. So what a lot of races do is they actually paint directional signs on the streets, and we would have eight turns total, one direction, and then eight coming back, so if it would be okay to paint, it would be sixteen total paint arrows on the street. That would be fantastic. And one more thing, we do hold the insurance for all of our events. Do listen to us.
This is starting at the high school and then running to the.
Starts at the high school, goes through, it's actually considered an open course, which is why the auxiliary would be necessary, because cars could go through and they would direct traffic. It wasn't busy at all last year. I think we had maybe two cars go through during the course of the race. The actual start is at five-thirty, and people who walk, we expect them to be crossing officially by seven, so it's about an hour and a half in terms of having that route.
Move to approve. Second. Police chief, you have any problem?
Under discussion tonight, I would, the only thing I would caution is, I think we should check a little closer and make sure that any pavement markings are legal to apply to the streets, first of all. Secondly, to determine the permanency or the temporariness of what you intend to do, because we don't want to confuse traffic or motorists or anything after your event is over. They, if they're going to stay for a permanent period of time, that might not be sufficient, whereas if you get a temporary thing that washes off, that might be okay. Just communicate to me, we'll check it. The rest of it is fine. We have a number of officers that volunteer their time to go up and help with various parts of the event. This thing started out very small, it's now getting very large. The other thing about this important for us is, is it's a challenge for police to deal with people with special needs if you don't know what the communication modalities are with those people on the very spectrum. This is valuable information for us and can prevent violence between police and people with special needs, so we thank you for your help with the training.
Some of the races that have run out of traction and part of use are essentially a chalk that they've let down, and I don't know how that works when it rains very, very hard, but it's very temporary and does leave a fair little mark. You might want to consider that. Then, Chris, you might top your crystal or something.
We do stay on the southern port of the city, so we will not be crossing the tracks.
Any other questions? Deanne?
Schaller?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
McFane?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not closing the microphone for anyone else that wants to appear in front of council, but we have to go into executive session shortly. I need a motion to go into executive session. Submove. Second. Discussion pending litigation. One, two, two, three.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McFane?
Yes.
Schaller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McFane?
Yes.
Schaller?
Yes.
Challenger?
Yes.
Sorry for the wait, but that was a necessary meeting. Under recognition of persons desiring to appear, is there anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to approach council? Not moving to the management report.
from the Ohio Liquor Control regarding application for liquor permit, and that's just a renewal. I understand that's an annual thing.
That's correct. It's an annual renewal. It's for the Valero Service Station. We have no obligation for no reason to oppose the reapplication.
Do we need to do anything like that? We've been doing it in the past and everything here, really.
No, it's, no, we don't need to do that. Okay, uh, let's see. Uh, we, in, in your packets, I put a proposal for this year's town cleanup. And we'll be having that advertised, uh, on the website and Facebook this week. The details are in your packets. It's, it's the same as, uh, as last year. We're gonna try to encourage the citizens to come out to the park. It really cut down our costs and, uh, we were able to keep the city clean and basically cleaned everything up in five days rather than two and a half, three weeks of, uh, you know, the whole, just having to go back to the different zones. So, over last year, what we did learn that, uh, we really need to make sure that everybody gets their, their, uh, cleanup stuff out on Sunday night and then you don't have to worry about what zone you're in. And, uh, like I said, that will be up and running. Do you know that, uh, the actual? Zone map? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, it'll be town cleanup. Be Monday through Friday again and the dumpsters will be out on the fourth, uh, at the park, August 4th through the 8th. We'll have a drop-off site Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 3:00 PM. We'll be open Thursday from 7:30 to 7:00 PM. And as long as you have everything by the curb, uh, by the fourth, we'll be, uh, you know, you'll be good for the zones. You won't have to understand what zone you're in. And, uh, we're asking again for the restrictions of, uh, just three large items out by the curb to, uh, but you can take, you can take as much stuff as you want to the, uh, to the park where they'll have those dumpsters set up. And it worked out really well last year.
Are there any restrictions on what you can dump or pick up?
Yeah, there will be, uh, online, there's, it'll be, as far as you don't want anything crayon. You know, the crayon would have to be professionally removed. But we are taking, uh, and we'll make a determination on computer monitors and tube TVs by then, but we don't know exactly right now. But a lot of the citizens are calling in at this time, you know, asking about town cleanup, so it's gonna be the fourth through the eighth of August.
What did we end up saving? Do you have any idea?
Oh, boy. You remember Jesse?
It was like twelve thousand dollars. Eight, twelve, fifteen, if I remember right.
And, and the other thing is, is it just cleaned up the town so much, you know, by keeping to the strict zones, it just really helped. You know, the guys didn't have to go out there two and three times like, you know, normal driving through the streets looking for miles as they develop. Uh, at the beginning of this year, we talked about trying to improve our leaf pickup and our brush pickup. He, I, I, as I understand, the original intent of brush pickup was, you know, after a storm, a little bit of storm damage comes down or over the winter and you lose some, uh, sticks up, you know, take them out. But, uh, what the problem, there's been a problem developed after, oh, probably the last couple of years, last few years. Companies are coming in and cutting, professionally cutting trees down in the community, but leaving the brush for our guys to pick up. So, rather than the citizen to go ahead and, you know, I, I guess that it would cost more for them to take that brush away, so I've, uh, taken a couple of pictures just this week. The, uh, the second one's pretty much the poster child of what we don't want to happen. You know, we don't mind picking up the brush monthly, but, uh, when it's forty foot long by ninety feet tall, it's, it's, it's pretty bad, so we're gonna have to, uh, you know, maybe go out there and visit those sites and, and ask the citizens to get those, uh, cleaned up by a professional because it's, you know, some of them were actually put on city property, by the way, so we're just gonna have to visit them this week if, uh, just to, just to warn you. Uh, as you saw in the paper this week, uh, Lex, we applied for a, uh, well, actually we applied for the grant, a CBPG grant for a partial, uh, grant for a replacement of a bridge on Camelot Drive. And we're gonna hear about that. So that's a piece of critical infrastructure that we're trying to get help with. So, John Von Vogel and, uh, I went down to the county commissioners and presented that. As you saw in the paper, hopefully, uh, we, we'll hear back something soon. I also put a legislation on the agenda regarding an ODOT grant. A lot of these grants, you know, you can get different funding for different infrastructure. And this particular one, we saw a chance to get an eighty percent grant for, uh, it's a, it's an ODOT grant, but it's for, uh, basically sidewalks. So we've used this in the past. I've talked to John Von Vogel about this. We used it, and actually for downtown, we used part of that for that. We also used it for sidewalks out of fourteen, I believe, Pittsburgh Street.
Yes.
So we use this, uh, you know, this program before. It's a good opportunity to get an eighty percent grant on a, on a, you know, on a set of sidewalks. With the understanding that we're also looking at other critical infrastructure that we're just not shopping around for sidewalks. You know, I've got, I've asked for help for stormwater and, uh, other critical infrastructure, sewer replacement and things like that. But, uh, we sent this in, I believe it was, uh, at the end of February, they invited us back for the second round, if you will, present a clarification. But really, they need council's approval before we move forward. Now, I'm gonna try to line up some other funding for that to kind of close the twenty percent grant, you know, part of that. And this project will take place in 2016. Basically, this project will be Fairfield Avenue, uh, bringing in the town from, uh, bittersweet clearing. Where does it stop at, Joe?
Right, right near Woodland.
Near Woodland. So that's on your, uh, agenda. Well, it's a water plant and crew's worked alongside a well service company to replace a pump and some plumbing out at one of the wells. Uh, street department, uh, we know we still have leaves to do. Jesse's tired of leaves, they're all tired of leaves. And, uh, we, we hope to maybe even streamline that. I know we talked about last year trying to get something together with the, with the county solid waste district. We received some awards. We're gonna try to work with them, at least getting some ideas for how we can improve our leaf pickup. Uh, the crew put down twenty-four tons of pot mix in order to address some pot holes and this. I understand it's a more of a, more of a permanent fix than the, the cold patch, but we understand that we still have a lot of pot holes to get out there. Uh, the street cuts for, uh, over the winter. When we cut up the streets, those will be patched over the next couple of weeks. We're looking at, uh, we're addressing a couple, let's see, four in the alleys, uh, which involves grading and placing down grannies. And we intend on start sweeping the streets over the next couple of weeks, so that'll be good. We have, uh, chief, did you want to mention, uh, chief, you had asked me about, uh, as far as, uh, you know, access to your information?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Requested a couple of minutes, excuse me, on the agenda. You may have read editorial in the morning journal, um, a few days ago. First of all, I'm gonna point out that, uh, news articles that you read are factual, based on reporters who gather information from reports and whatnot. Those are facts, those are news articles. Editorials, on the other hand, are basically just some editor's opinion. They may or may not reflect the majority opinion of people in the community or anywhere else. For instance, I once knew a guy whose opinion was that, uh, the moon landing was fake and pro wrestling is real. Just an opinion.
Boy, is that true.
Uh, no. I've heard that Muslims made a agreement. Normally, they don't bother responding to, to, uh, those types of criticisms, but in this case, the case made was patently unfair. Um, and I think it was incoherent, kind of filled with a lot of unnecessary hyperbole. No one was berated at that meeting, for instance. No one, uh, thinks that I know of, thinks of any way the Columbia Police are notorious for anything. Um, I'm pretty well aware of the Higher Advice Code, Section 149.43. I've been doing this for thirty-three years. I've been doing a number of trainings on this. We, every year, get and review the Attorney General Sunshine laws, updates, and we keep up with that stuff. And we release everything that we're required to release and we talk to who we're required to talk to and do what we're supposed to do. So I'm pretty well aware of it and we go well beyond minimum compliance with that. For instance, I'm required to present public records for inspection during regular business hours, according to the code. But it often goes past regular business hours. People from all the news outlets come in after hours and we always accommodate their requests. Uh, I personally get calls all the time. Weekends, holidays, while I'm on vacation, late at night, early in the morning, get woken up. Part of the job, but, uh, I don't really legally have to do that. But what I'm trying to point out is we go beyond the minimum requirements to try and accommodate these requests. And we don't withhold anything or, uh, we don't avoid telling the truth. I even got a call once when I was attending my mother's funeral in Florida, even took that call. So we take the call, um, even though we're not all the good. I'm also required to provide public records within a reasonable time. We give them to our reporters pretty much immediately. We produce a daily summary that we give to all the reporters that come in. And they can ask for anything that they want beyond that, whether it's clarification or whatever, and we, we give that to them immediately. I do agree with the editor on a couple of points. They're legally entitled to get this information, that's absolutely true, they're correct. We always provide it and we don't, however, begrudgingly reveal it, we just give it to them. So the hyperbole is my mind exception. I'm not asking you to take my word for it, though. I would never do that because my word is good, but I have a self-interest in this. So, what I'm gonna do, if you don't mind indulging you for a minute, I'm not gonna ask you to take my word. What I'm gonna do is refer to the morning journal itself and their, their pages, their own paper. And let me show you a couple of things here. The stuff you see in blue on these pages represents the information that they printed from the, the logs I'm talking about. There's days and days. These are from before the editorial was written, just so you know. And you can see that there's anywhere from, you know, half a column, a quarter column, up to a couple of columns in these things. And this is, uh, the stuff that they print. And that has names, addresses, locations, tells what happened. Where do you suppose they got that information? I'll tell you, they got it from us and, uh, so their own paper prints this stuff that we give them. So I, I really don't know how they can say that we're withholding information, they're failing to tell the truth, we're giving that information. All of you are reading it in the paper, that's where they get it. So I agree with the editor on the point that they can get the information, we do give it to them. I also agree that newspapers have to be held to a, a standard accountability and to verify their reports. And I don't think that standard was met in the editorial. I think that we do meet the requirements well beyond the minimum required by 149.43. And I would respectfully disagree with the editor's article. And I want you folks to know, and all you folks to know, that we, we tell the truth and we, we release this information to the extent the law requires us to. I personally don't like putting the names of victims in the paper, innocent victims who have nothing to do with a crime that that they were victimized. The suspect gets protection and doesn't have to have his name published, but the victims do. That's what the law is, I don't have to like it, I just gotta live by it and enforce it. So, that's what we do. I just wanted to point that out to you folks and respectfully submit that we do comply with those laws and, and I disagree with the editor. Thanks for your time.
Okay, I had a, thanks chief, appreciate it. I had a discussion of, uh, health insurance on the agenda. Actually brought, uh, DC Wellness in, if you guys can come on in. So, over the last year, just to, uh, kind of bring everybody up to speed, we were, we brought the insurance committee together that was comprised of a number of management, a couple of the unions and a number of non-management, non-unions. And I, I think we've, uh, done a pretty good job, due diligence on, uh, researching this and, uh, hopefully, we, we found a sustainable solution to our, uh, health, healthcare concerns. Hopefully, we can, uh, control costs and, uh, preserve the benefits at the same time, so. And I, chief was actually on that committee. If you want to say a couple of things, then I'll turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, as, as the city manager pointed out, the committee was made up of representatives from both the unions, a management representative, which is made of a non-management representative. And then the city manager's, uh, an official to break the tie if any occurred in voting, to make recommendations. It's a recommending body only. We worked at this for eight or ten months, I guess. Starting out, the original charter from city council was to find ways to contain costs that were running away on our, our health insurance program. Uh, we were also charged with trying to preserve the benefits to the extent possible within that framework. We were also charged with checking all possible companies or avenues for insurance to save us money. We were to explore self-funded as well as fully insured plans, so that we would have a, an apples-to-apples comparison across the board on everything that's available out there to ensure our employees, but also to reduce and contain costs. Uh, so those, those being the charges, we began that process eight or ten months ago and, uh, believe me, with that diverse of a group, we didn't agree on much going in and going forward. We found that a couple of things happened. Everybody wants to storm the castle, calling for the head of the monster. We get that, but we couldn't figure out exactly how we go about this, we couldn't agree on that. We came to a realization that as laypeople who have done some insurance work on committees, there are so many things in their jargon, industry speak, and obfuscation, places to hide, if you will, uh, costs. Where, uh, it could be a 12-12 versus a 24-12. Initially, we didn't know what that meant. We know what it means now and they can answer questions on it when they come aboard to talk tonight. So we needed what we thought was an independent third party. Somebody who wasn't trying to sell us any insurance. Somebody that, nobody that had a, a self-interest that could review it, but that was a part of the industry that could tell us what, in English, all these words meant and what these concepts were that we were looking at, but really couldn't decipher between the companies. Because it all looks good when you're reading it and you're looking basically at sales pitch when you're reading the stuff in some way. So the independent third party, and that being DC Wellness, who's represented here tonight, they, they speak the language and they helped us to wade through those obfuscations. And thinking it was kind of an apples-to-apples comparison to make our consideration of what path we would take. After we gathered all the proposals from all the companies, of course, we had to interview all the employees and submit some claims experience data. Some of that we just got back as recently as this week. Uh, the data piece that we got back last week by Wednesday, so it's kind of dragged out longer than we thought it would and now we're up against a wall. But that's through, it's all the DC Wellness or the committee or the city. This lengthy process ended up resulting in, uh, we hoped it resulted in a clear path out of this conundrum. And we examined all these policies and all these recommendations and in fact, a clear path did emerge in our mind. Um, two of the companies wouldn't even bid, one was suspiciously low-bolt, actually coming in below what the actual costs are proving to be over a forty-eight month period. Automatically, that's a, a red flag. And then we found one that looked like it would be a pretty good path. Uh, this choice will, uh, cost us literally hundreds of thousands of dollars less than we paid in the past planning year. So we looked at that as a positive. It eliminates some of the expensive gaps in our previous plan. Well, the city was unknowingly, in some cases, on the hook for, uh, what we traditionally call a dummy hole, a place where coverage didn't exist. And we were on the hook for some of that extra stuff. That's part of what drove our costs up and we uncovered that after we stripped away all this language and began to examine it. And, uh, we've come up with some pretty indisputable facts that weren't sales gimmicks or nebulous promises that we weren't able to prove. There's still some things we can do even after approving this, if you decide to, that will be savings to the city. And our employees, we had a tiered offering, that's something that can happen even after we approve a direction, if you choose to do that. We believe that promote cooperation helps to contain costs and gives ownership to the employees because there are disincentives in there for abusing the plan. For instance, going to the emergency room, you start sneezing. Not a good thing for your health plan. Costs a lot of money, or you can go to a Doc-in-the-Box places or your family doctor. So making the changes also saves us some money on third-party administrator costs, but we're getting beat up pretty good, I think, in my opinion, at least. The other thing that was interesting is we came to what turned out to be unanimous recommendation... recommendation. That pretty much bored me, because we didn't agree on much when we started. But I think the path is clear enough, and I always like to keep it simple. When I hear hookbeats, I like to think horses and not zebras. So I'm not out there with the zebras, we went with the horses. And the choice here at us was simple and clear-cut, I've been authorized by each member of the committee to present to you this recommendation, and you have it in your packet, in the words of DC Wellness, who were far more eloquent than I could have possibly been. But out of all of our research, we feel we did identify a pretty clear path, and I think that DC Wellness agrees, joins in our recommendation to you, and that's what we had before you. And questions that may come up, or you may have, I would respectfully defer to these gentlemen who are professionals unless they pertain specifically to committee actions and what we did, but it was kind of an arduous process, it was a long process, wasn't easy. We expected it to be easier than it was, but we finally got to a point where we feel pretty comfortable with the recommendation, and we believe it's gonna save, save some money, we believe it's gonna begin to contain costs, we believe it's long-range, we believe that we can go forward with even more cost savings, and trying to move into a position where we eliminate some of the things that got us where we are, through no fault of anybody really, other than just not understanding some of the language that was, in fact, the sales pitch. I would defer to them to answer any questions, let's get some specifically to me, thanks for your time.
Well, yeah, thank you, everybody, and I'll make a couple of comments. When your packets were produced prior Friday, we had yet to hear back from Health America in terms of whether or not they would be providing a proposal. We had got an email last night at midnight, and then a formal letter this morning at 8:30 a.m., and they have taken the position that Anthem has taken, I can provide you with a copy of this letter for your packets, but it says, "We're declining to issue a formal proposal because our proposal is not competitive. If you choose to have us issue a formal proposal, we will do so, but we've sort of saved ourselves the time," and I can provide you with that letter as well. That was the last carrier on our list, the last outstanding item that we had in our analysis, and there were emails in the packet that outlined kind of why we were up against the wall, not just with them, but with other carriers as well. With that, we'll open it to any questions, and we're prepared to go through anything in the packet as well.
However you want to proceed.
I'm all ears, go.
Sure. Well, we'll go through the packet, and we'll use the comparison spreadsheet, which was at the top of the packet. This is really the guiding light, and the other things that were in there were the proposals and the pertinent pages of the proposals. We started off, and the first column is a fully insured proposal from Medical Mutual Ohio, who everyone is familiar with. Their proposal was at $1.8 million when we did our straw poll initially, it remained at that number when we got them the information that you would need to quote the case, the medical applications, the claims history, and we were able to get them to produce that proposal, and I believe they were the first one in. The next two columns are MCA, the current administrator, these are both self-funded plans. What I'll point out before we start getting into the self-funded options is the top box here on your spreadsheet, we've broken out costs annually, medical and prescription claims, the amount over the specific stop-loss. That number is important, because those are claims dollars that are paid, when you're self-funded, there's reinsurance above that, when you're fully insured, those are still bills that have to be paid, so we've included that. We've gotten to an annual claims expense, both annually and then a 48-month average here at the bottom. We've also broken it down monthly. Those numbers themselves are simply the medical bills. The next two columns are the fixed costs, so what you pay for the reinsurance, the ID cards, customer service, those things, those are the fixed costs that the chief referenced, and we've broken those down again annually and monthly fixed costs. And then ultimately, all the way to the right, we've driven to the total annual cost of the plan, both the variable and the fixed costs. And with that, we'll pick back up in the MCA current column here, where last year's proposal said that $1,063,908 was going to be where the city ended up. As you can see on the top here, and I apologize, we had to take averages for the month of April, because those have obviously not come in yet, but we're well over that. And when we received the renewal from them, which is in the second column, in addition to the points we pointed out in the narrative, the numbers at the bottom here are what they used for projected claims, $60,093 on a monthly basis, and $721,112 on an annual basis. And at the top here, we know that the numbers over the last 48 months were $80,021.53 and $960,258.41 annually. So that proposal and those claims projections are in direct contradiction with what we've had.
Four years of period of evidence.
This is an important point for a couple of reasons. These numbers at the bottom, and also the number that we have here with Mutual Health Services, are the numbers that you use to drive the cost share. You use these numbers to develop what the rate is for a single employee spouse, employee child, and family. And if you develop those rates off of a number that is low, you're not going to fund up to what your expected liability would be. In a traditional case, and many years ago, when the city had a self-funded medical plan and had what we call a rainy day fund, you can fund up to the expected number and leave a margin for your worst-case scenario. If you have that happen, you can dip into your rainy day fund. The issue you have is if you're funding below the expected number, and you just have an average year, now you have to go into the rainy day fund, and if you have an average year, or even a bad year, you find yourself in the position that we were this year. And that amount, that overage, comes directly from the city, there is no cost share in that, because at the outset of the year, the funding factors were derived from a number that was low, that was too low. So in terms of how did we get to a point where the self-funded rainy day fund was depleted, and how do we find ourselves where we are today, that is how we got to where we are today. And it's been the same administrator, and as I mentioned in the packet, the administrator was also the advisor, so that the cat was watching the hen house for a period of time. So when we looked at that proposal, in addition to a lot of the omissions in the stop-loss contract that we were not comfortable with, the projections on the claims were so low that it couldn't be taken seriously, and we simply trued those up, it was more aligned with the market again, but the fixed costs were also low because the reinsurance contracts were not adequate. United Healthcare issued a fully insured proposal here in the next column. As the chief alluded to, the total cost for that plan would be $878,178. That covers, for them, their administrative cost and what they feel that they would pay out in medical claims on the group, again, going contrary to what we saw in the actual 48-month rolling averages.
Did they have that number?
What's that?
Did they have that number?
Yes, yes, they had the medical applications, they had all the-
No, you gave them all our actual cost for the last four years?
No, 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 they get the renewal document, they get the renewal document. And then if underwriters ask for follow-up information, you provide it, but standard industry practice is the renewal, so the current rates-
They got the $1,023.
Yep, yes, along with the medical applications.
And they didn't ask for more?
No, no. We went back, when you see things like this, and making a change from self-funded to fully insured, you need to be cognizant that if something seems too good to be true, it quite possibly could be. And we asked them prior to this meeting, could we obtain a second-year rate cap, meaning will you go out there and cap the renewal at a set number, and that may cause us to change our recommendation, to which they said no. So we're in a position this year where we have two declinations, fully insured, one at $1.8 million and one at $878. If we made this move, go ahead.
I don't mean to, I don't want to stop you, I don't want to interrupt you, I'm accused to, but they're different plans.
They are-
One is only an $800 max out-of-pocket, and one is $7,500, of course, it's gonna cost less.
Well, this is the current plan that we quoted here, to get an apples-to-apples cost basis. The plan that we quoted with United here was the closest to what they had today, and that $2,500 and $7,500 is copays only. If you go through here, the deductible was actually $0, meaning that all you pay is copays, so if you go in-
That looks like a good plan, on the surface.
On the surface, yes, but if we don't cover the cost, if they can't make money, or at least eke out on the first year, we're going to see it in renewal, and we're in a position right now where we could get declined by every fully insured carrier next year and be forced to either take United Healthcare's offer, or be in a position where we're out of the benefit business. We've gotten two declinations this year, there's nothing stopping them from taking this number, going to 1.4 next year.
But you're there now. I mean, if we did this, this is $878,000-
Yep, that's-
Compared to 1.2 million with a estimate with a cap of 1.4.
Yes.
So, and we know that we've done 1.2 across the last two years.
Yes.
So we're looking at a ballpark savings of one year of $500,000.
Correct, but-
So if next year they came back and it was 40% higher, it would still only cost 1.1.
But what if it's 75% higher, and it could be?
Yeah, there's nothing-
What if it's 75% higher, and it could be?
If we've spent 1.2-
And I think that we just wasted a half a million dollars.
If they tack it on in addition next year, that's the only caution.
What if they don't?
If they don't, that's, that is, I mean, that's an option, I'm just saying, if we've spent 1.2 historically, and we're gonna pay 878, we will save 400,000, but someone will have lost it if we just perform at the level in which we've been busted to.
But don't they lump all of us into a group?
No, this is a good point, too, and I'm glad that you brought that up. Community rating, which is in effect right now for the 2 to 50 market, does just that, it lumps everyone in, and most importantly, it takes out medical experience, medical underwriting. Your group, being 50-plus, is still medically underwritten, meaning the actual experience of this group plays a large part in what the rates are year in and year out. Community rating in the state of Ohio is set to expand, as the law is written today on January 1st of 2016, to 100 and below, which means we would fall into that if the expansion goes into effect. So we really look at it in terms of the next 24 months, when you are self-funded, you know exactly what the claims are and what you're paying for. When you're fully insured, you don't have access to that. If we can make it to 11 of 16, and if medical experience is truly hurting us this year and will over the next 24 months, it would be our recommendation to know what you were paying for for the next 24 months, and then going into there rather than having it out there at the whim of the carrier next year, but it is something that can be taken into consideration, it absolutely is.
And then also, I don't want to be the only one asking questions up here, why don't we have, instead of a 400 on the self-funded through Mutual Health, why didn't we look at that with a 25, 7, 500? I mean, wouldn't that also have lowered our out-of-pocket?
In terms-
If we did this mutual health service comparably to the United Healthcare, I mean, the benefit's different.
Sure, it's not a dollar-for-dollar savings, so the out-of-pocket maximum is not applied to the number of contracts. There's 16 singles, 36 families, and under the scenario on your spreadsheet, there's, if everyone tapped out-